Hello, everybody, and welcome to the July 8th meeting of the Westford Select Board. And we're going to open, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance, today led by Terry.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We're now going to move to open forum, and I think, Kristin, you have a few things to start us off with.
I do, but if any board member has anything, I'll let them start.
Any questions on board?
That would be me.
Okay, great, please.
So, a few things. We put out an advertisement for our open boarding committee seats, and that is, the volunteer activity forms are coming in. We still need members, so please review that. Specifically, we have a new open space and recreation plan committee that's going to be kicking off later this summer, and the 30th anniversary celebration committee. So if anyone's listening or knows of someone who may be interested in applying to those committees or other openings, please feel free to do so. Earlier this evening, Noel Donovan and I attended the fire promotion celebration for Deputy Chief Matt Spatek, Captain Tim Vigors, Acting Captain Andy Anderson, Lieutenant Bill Olson, and Acting Lieutenant Brian Baker. So congratulations to those firefighters. I was also able to meet some of our new firefighters that came on board in the last month. So it was a great event for families. And then, on a more somber note, I'd like to just take a moment to remember Jim Kaziniak, who is a Westford resident, and he was on the zoning board of appeals. He passed away on June 28th. So we thank him for his service at the town of Westford, give our sympathies to his family and friends, and just take a minute to remember Jim in our community.
Thank you for that, sure. And our condolences to Jim's family and friends. We are now going to open to the public for open forum, and just as sort of a hopping ahead point of order, we do later on tonight have review and approve the resident voting guide, voting study committee charge. We will entertain comments about the specifics of the charge, if the public have comments about the wording of the charge, scope of the charge, who's on the charge. But if anyone has any comments that are of a more general nature, that don't specifically address the topic on our agenda tonight, now would be the time to do it. So if you have comments for that later, we welcome them then, but if you've got something that's outside that scope, please do it now. Welcome, Al.
Good evening. Al Prescott, 16 Lakeshore Drive North. I'd like to tell you a story about my sister-in-law. She's the last person that I know that grew up behind the iron curtain under communism in Romania. She came to America, and she became a citizen. I was at her swearing-in ceremony, for lack of a better description for it. And I was struck by something that the federal judge, who officiated it, actually said once the swearing-in was completed. He said, "You now have the right, the most sacred right that we have in America, and that's the vote." It's one of the few rights that, in the Constitution, is specifically reserved to citizens. The first 10 Bill of Rights, right to freedom of speech, freedom to bear arms, those are reserved to the people. It's not until the 11th Amendment that you actually start seeing the word "citizens." And to just remind this board about what this, how this actually plays out in the Constitution, the 26th Amendment talks about that the right of citizens, word "citizens," to vote shall not be abridged if you're over the age of 18. The 24th Amendment says the right of citizens shall not be abridged for lack of paying taxes. The 19th Amendment says the right of citizens shall not be abridged based on sex. The 15th Amendment says the right of citizens to vote shall not be abridged based on race, color, or previous servitude. And the 14th Amendment defines what a citizen is. It says, "All persons born or naturalized in the United States are citizens." And right after that, it makes another statement. It says that no state or local government, which has been the reading of the courts, meaning of the 14th Amendment takes everything that's in the Constitution and brings it right down to this level, to this board, shall not abridge the rights of citizens. This board should not approve this charge. It is outside your purview. It is unconstitutional. It has no business being in front of the town. The town has no business squandering precious resources on something like this. If something like this is to come before town meeting, let the resident who wanted to do it go out and get the signatures and do it as a citizen's petition, and we can deal with it that way. But this board should not do this. Thank you.
Thanks, Al. Anything else from the public tonight?
I don't see anything on the way.
Okay, thank you, Kristin. We're going to move on to the 7:05 item, which is our consent agenda. And so we have two tonight. Request to approve the following. First is a flag raising. The event is the India flag raising. The applicant is India Association of Greater Boston. The date is July 26, 2025. Time is 10:00 a.m. The second is road and bike race. Event is 2025 Right to Defeat ALS. The applicant is MQ, the ALS Association. The date is the 20th, 2025. Location, Powers Road, Route 110 to Route 225. Any questions from the board?
Can I just make one comment first?
Yeah, please.
So regarding the flag raising, there may be an instance where the India Association of Greater Boston comes before you at either your June 22nd meeting or a future meeting to change that. We put on this, the abundance of caution in case they wanted to make that June 20th, July 26th date, but you may see it in a future meeting. Just wanted to give you a heads up on it.
I know you're an August 10th or something like that.
Yeah, there was some, there was some discussion, and just briefly, we asked both the DEI committee and the requesting agency, which is the India Association of Greater Boston, we asked them if they'd like to make a change to come back and make a new request after reaching consensus. There was sort of an email jungle there. So we asked them to decide what they wanted together and consensus, then come back. So they may be coming back to us, so they may take advantage of this statement. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Today, we have a roll call, since we've got Sean.
So move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Sean?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
I'm an aye?
Aye.
Aye, thanks, Kristin. The next up is 7:10, to approve an application for Class II Auto Dealer License for Raphael Daniel and Jobson Almeida, DBA Westford Auto Sales Corporation, located 341 Littleton Road, to increase the number of cars on the property from 38 to 76. I guess...
If we could take them together, that would be preferable.
Okay. And also to approve an application for Class II Auto Dealer License for Reginald D. Clair, DBA Westford Auto Sales, Inc., located 341 Littleton Road, also known as 157 Concord Road, to decrease the number of cars from 96 to 20. And Kristin, just want to explain any background to this request.
Sure. So this applicant was before your board, I think, a year and a half ago, to separate into two associations, two businesses, and those licenses were amended at that point in time. My understanding is that the applicant is here this evening to further amend those licenses related to the number of cars that they are selling on the property. So my understanding is the applicant is here and ready to give a presentation to the board related to that. Also, the land use department has reviewed this related to zoning, and there is no requirement to go before the zoning board or planning board because there is no increase in vehicles.
Okay. Petitioner's here. We welcome you to come up and make any comments here.
Yeah, I think I just, I might have just...
I'm sorry, if you could just say your name.
I'm Reginald Clair. I've been there in the corner for 43 years. And when I was here last time, I think I might have misworded the way we were trying to, we're just gone, moved, Westford Auto Sales Incorporated onto Concord Road. And I don't need that many cars or that license, so I want to put the other part on Westford Auto Corp., the 76, and then just keep 20 on my side, this side over there where my classic cars are parked.
Okay. Great. Any, any questions tonight for the petitioner?
I have one question. It was a question that someone, a resident, had asked me to ask. She couldn't be here tonight. Is, are you going to add additional lighting for nighttime lighting?
Well, I'd love, I'd love to, but we used to have lights all along the front, and 43 years ago, the town said we had to take them down. So we have lights on the building for overnight, and lights on the sign pointing in for safety. And we've got all the cameras and everything around there now, too. So we can...
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, if they're not all, entertain a motion to approve both 7:10 and 7:12 items on your agenda.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. To unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we thought Terry was retired, but he's not retired. Our 1718 item is request from the Monuments and Memorals Committee to place a monument at the entrance to Greystone Estates. Thank you. Welcome, Terry, and you and Mike as well.
Feel free to bring up an extra chair to join the table if you'd like.
Terry, would you like the presentation?
Sure. Just, oh, yeah, if you want, that's fine. Just be good application. The presentation's fine. It's got the pictures in.
If you wouldn't mind introducing yourself. So I know Terry, I know Mike's here, and there's one more.
Actually, Mike Norman.
Mike Norman. Okay.
He's not naked tonight.
Okay.
He's something human. I am Scott Rieb, live in Russell's Way, in Westford, about 20 years.
Okay, great, welcome.
And I'm Anthony Grace. I live at 81 Russell's Way. I've been there since 1999.
Terry, say your chair of monuments and memorials.
And you've been here since...
Since 83. Welcome. Thank you. So this came to us, Mike and I have had, Mike Norman and I had several conversations. It was referred up to by the town manager's office to come and see me when I was here for a meeting, and Mike and I sat down with the applicants, and they had a very comprehensive plan, kind of already in the works, but needed a formal application process. So we decided, well, the town manager, assistant town manager, myself, Mike, decided that pursue this through the monuments and memorials, because we have an outline or a process for how we throw this out to all the departments and let everybody get a chance to have a chop at it. So we took the formal application and processed it up. So we got a number of results from the various departments. We knew that conservation was involved, and the select board was involved, but a lot of other, Kyle, I mean, the comments that you'll see I got from the, from various departments in the, throughout our town, townwide mailing, and, excuse me, the department heads, anyway, excuse me. And I did, I noticed there was two of them missing. One's the health department, I don't know why it didn't make it into my package, but the health department okayed it. And I did get one comment from the school committee saying, "Well, can we put a sign out there for Greystone?" So I told the school committee...
For Rita Miller.
Yeah, for, excuse me, for Rita Miller School. And I suggested that they pursue that through their normal channels, only through the school superintendent's office. So, but otherwise, we saw a very complete package, and we approved it through the Monuments and Memorals Committee, and then forwarded it out to all the department heads and boards and committees. And you'll see that in the package as well. So, you know, we had a lot of onsite visits, and with various people, various boards and committees, as well as staff, to go and look at them. The first place is there at Groton Road, is the entranceway in off of Groton Road. It's set back quite a ways, behind the signs. You'll see it as we go. I think the next picture shows it actually, yeah. Option number one is almost behind the bushes back there, or in front of the bushes that are there. And we took a look at it. It has, it's a nice looking sign. It's set back quite a ways from any obstruction, you know, with public safety vehicles coming through. And we think it...
And I was going to jump in, but that is a different location than...
That's the conservation.
That's the other location there, right, yeah.
Okay.
This is the Tingsborough side off of...
So just to clarify for the board, so there were two signed requests that came in through the Monuments and Memorals Committee. One is on land under care and custody of the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission heard that last week, or the week before, and approved that subject to a license. Tonight before you, there is a request at the corner of Russell's Way and Groton Road, which is on town land under the control and custody of the Select Board. So that's why they're before you this evening. If you do choose to move forward with approving this request, it would also require a license agreement between the town and the homeowners association of Greystone.
And just to be very clear, this is the site we're talking about, the center of town.
That's correct. Yeah, we consider this entranceway to be more prominent, more torn, a little more important to us than the Tingsborough. They're, they're both important, but we, it's a vulnerable priority. There's more traffic coming in through here than there is on the other side of Greystone.
We go separate now. Should I turn to the board? Okay. Questions from the board?
Which side did you pick on this one, on Groton Road? Side one or side two? You got option one, option two?
Right. We were offering it as a either choice. We don't have a strong preference either way.
I'm worried about the site distance in option one. If you look at that, and you're stopped at that stop sign, and you're back halfway in your car, that sign in option one would be right between you and some fairly fast traffic on Route 40. And I think that option two would be very visible, fine, and out of the site distance, so it doesn't interfere with the traffic there, because you're just looking for an accident if you obscure...
Sure.
Because, you know, people coming out, they have a tendency to do the California stop, hesitate, and go.
Right. I would, that's a perfectly valid observation. I would point out that the sign that we're posting is quite a bit smaller than what you see on that banner right there, for what that's worth. But I see your point.
How high is it off the ground?
We have it in a, in a document. I hope that document was given to you, but we have measurements of it.
It's, or, yeah, 60 inches in width, 20 inches in height. And it's...
It's not very high.
20 is pretty low. And it stands on two concrete pillars, and it was... It isn't here.
Okay, so it comes up a little higher than that.
Mike's trying, Mike's trying to bring it up on the screen.
I still like option two. I mean, that's my personal opinion. Unless you put between you and oncoming traffic, that would be better.
Right. Okay, why don't we note that, and then...
I agree with John. Yeah, I think that option two would be a safer option.
Because it'd still be just as visible.
Right, that's correct.
Okay. Kristin, Sean, any comments?
Briefly.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I know the presenter's touched on this, but there, it is worth noting that there, that we do have a school down there, and it's tucked in behind a neighborhood. And I guess one of the concerns could be that, you know, for those who are out of town or aren't familiar with the school, that this could confuse drivers coming down. I, I think an easy solution to that would be, as the presenter's discussed, is to get more cited for Rita Miller down there. So I know that's not what we're here to discuss, but just so it's on the record, I would support something like that. Otherwise, I'm completely in support of this, this option one or option two.
Okay, Terry? I might point out that there's a playground back there as well. So we thought, we looked, we talked about that, Mike and I talked about that, is that there was an issue, is that could there be signage for the school as well as a playground? But it's outside of the purview of what we're applying for here.
Right, and so we may see something from the school committee, but there also something at town.
More recreation.
Right. There was a letter that came in late this afternoon from Valerie Young, who is on the school committee. I don't know if she was speaking on behalf of the school committee or on her own behalf, related to the concern of signage for Rita Miller. And my understanding is she may have been speaking against this specific sign, because then, if we allow one sign, how many other signs are we going to allow, either in this location or other locations throughout town, on town property, not within association property or private property?
And she also did point out that it might make it more confusing for people looking for the school if they see a sign for a neighborhood and no signs for school. They might not want to go into that neighborhood, and it's already pretty confusing.
Yeah, okay, so noted. It sounds like we're in consensus with the traffic line of site issue. I guess one thing I would just raise, and I'm not, I don't think this is a reason not to approve it, but it does raise the precedent issue, which Kristin raises. So, I mean, this is essentially a private, it's a group of private citizens asking to put a sign on town land. If other, this is just something we're going to have to exercise judgment, and we don't have a policy for. So if someone else came and said they wanted to put a similar sign that said Bob's Hot Dogs or something, right, you know, in their front yard, or on town land adjacent to their yard, we're just going to have to say, we're going to have to be comfortable saying, "That's a different situation." Presuming we wouldn't approve that. We have to be able to draw some line and use our own judgment. We're not going to have a policy to guide us here. So you, just maybe a little bit of awareness of a precedent issue here. So I don't think it's a reason not to do it necessarily, but just, we're just going to have to be careful to, if it became an issue, I guess, we probably would want to generate some sort of policy that we could guide ourselves by. But I'm not suggesting we do that right now. Do you have a comment?
Well, I just said, I think we should go away with this, and I don't really see the connection between this and school signs. School signs are different. You don't put up a sign like that necessarily for a school that's three quarters of the way down the road. I think everybody knows where the school is. You have signs for Westford Academy. You don't get the roads that show people how to get there. A sign like that might be appropriate. But I don't, I don't see a conflict here. I think just going ahead would be fine.
Okay. Okay, so we, I'm sorry, go ahead, Kristin.
Sorry, since there's been so much commentary about the school sign, I think, could I request that when Kyle gets back and has some time, that he maybe brings a proposal to us for both the school and for the playground that's down the recreation area? And that way, we can review and see what his options were.
Yeah, I, I think we would want to have the benefit of the input of the school committee before we even ask Kyle to develop anything of what the school is actually looking for as well.
I don't, I disagree. I don't think we need their input on this. I think we clearly understand that the issue is that there is a great distance between the school and the entrance to this, and I don't know how we're devolving into this. I just think that what's involved, maybe mention of it, let's just get some ideas, and if the school committee doesn't like the ideas, they can weigh in. We can certainly push it to them, too, and say, "Hey, this is what DPW is recommending for signage. Do you like it or not?" And if they want to give us some input, that would be great. But let's move forward on that.
So we usually, so again, this is sidebar issue. Agreed. Usually, we react to a petitioner instead of sort of spontaneous sign generation. So in this case, you would like to be the petitioner?
The petitioner, I think, is a member of the school committee that sent us an email.
Okay.
So raised this issue.
So one path we could take is, is that she could actually put forward a proposal through the normal process, so it'll arrive to us.
I don't think it's necessary, to be honest with you. We have the authority to do that, but if you feel strongly that you want the school committee to do it, I mean, I could say, I'm the chair of the Parker Recommission. I would want to have that sign put up that says, "This is the direction to the Greystone Recreation Area," right?
I don't, like, it's just usually there's some work involved with generating a petition for something like this. And I guess I'd be slightly more comfortable if a petitioner that had an interest in it was the one that asked for the work to be done, rather than preemptively asking for staff to, to generate options. We don't yet have a request.
We do have requests.
Not, not a formal request, like we're getting tonight from these folks.
Okay, well, we can ask them to put in a formal request and that.
Okay, I think that, that does...
It does. That's what you're asking for.
So with this issue, so the sidebar aside, now we're back to this issue, I guess, so we've heard from petitioners, we've heard from the board. Any questions or comments from the public related to this sign?
Just a couple. One point of clarification, the word "association" has been mentioned here, just to, just so you know. There is no formal association within Greystone Estates. It's all volunteer, and it's all done without any formal housing association.
Right, so understood it's not an H.O.A., it's a sort of a private citizen collective?
Exactly. And, and once again, we feel like that several other developments have one or two, even two signs in their development that are quite a bit smaller than ours. So that's what we kind of base our request on.
Okay. Kristy?
Hi, Kristy Bates, Pierce, South. I might have missed an earlier discussion on this. Was the discussion of the sign, did you already, did that already take place, like what this, what was going to be on the sign, or is this the first meeting?
This is the first meeting of the Select Board to discuss this location of this sign.
The location, but not the sign itself, because I know Terry sent out an email to all town committees and staff to get feedback. So I didn't know if you had actually seen that feedback.
It has come in.
And since that Select Board has reviewed it.
It's been in their packet, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Any other comments from the public? Okay, they're being not, I'll entertain a motion. It sounds like we're ready to discuss the motion to approve the request of the Monuments and Memorals Committee to place a monument at the entrance to Greystone Estates.
So move, take it.
Okay. Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
And this would, will require a license agreement with this board, so we can bring that forward at a future meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you, and thank you to the petitioners.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay, next up is our 7:30 item, to review and approve the Select Board Board and Committee Appointment Process. Thank you for hardworking to get that together, putting it in our pockets, in our pockets, in our packets. Just for the benefit of the public, do you want to just kind of briefly give the highlights of that?
Sure. So over the course of the last year, the Select Board has been discussing the Board and Committee Appointment Process, and we had started with a process where the Assistant Town Manager for Land Use, Jeff Morris, that Pam McNiff and myself collaborated on a memo that generally comes before your board now when you do appointments with, I think this was also one of Chris's ideas that he helped us flush out, to identify people who had submitted volunteer activity forms, how they were reviewed and vetted through that particular Board and Committee, and then the recommendation that ultimately comes through the Select Board, because it is your appointment. So we have informally been using that memo process with Boarding Committees who are onboarding new members, and I think that that has been successful. Throughout the process, we have now completed areas that create transparency, fairness, consistency, and efficiency into specific guidelines that we would look for your feedback tonight to then establish the official policy for Boarding Committee Appointments for the Select Board, knowing that there are other appointments that come into play from the town manager, the town moderator, and also joint appointments, such as the school committee and the Select Board. So the specific guidance is outlined in your packet this evening. I'm happy to go through it verbally or just talk on points that you may have questions on. I'll leave that preference to the board. But it really codifies that in writing. And then, we also have a section that codifies what happens after an appointment is made. So how does that person get sworn in? How do they get on-boarded with an email address, set up their ethics test? How do they get notified? And then what do we do as staff on the backend to allow them to get up to speed? So that's really the history of it. Again, happy to go through this in further detail if the board wishes.
I think it's very thoughtfully laid out. I know some board members may have comments. Does the board wish to go, sort of have it presented and talked through line by line, or do you feel like we've had an adequate chance to absorb it?
I just had one question. I mean, I think it's fine. The template we talked about. Do you have such a template?
Yes, we do. We've actually seen it in your packet last month, and I think this month as well, is that memo template that we've been working from. But we're happy to get you another copy of that. It wasn't necessarily a template when you saw it. It was actually completed and filled out by the Pedestrian Safety Committee the last time you saw it in your packet.
Kristin, I sent you a note that you may, may or may not be necessary here, but I think one question I had was, do we want to make it explicit that any interpretation of adequate adherence to the, to the spirit of this policy was really the determination of the Select Board? Meaning that, I'm imagining some circumstance where there's a fine line decision or choice about, you know, how the policy was, was going after. I don't think the intent of this is to create sort of an opportunity to litigate. It's more good practice, best practice guidelines. And in the end, the Select Board has the determination about whether the process followed was adequate. It could be that the Select Board decides that they would like to return this to the Requesting Committee and, and ask that they adhere more closely to this, but...
Or that you would just appoint based upon the knowledge that you have. You have that authority as well.
Yeah, I don't know if the, if the board feels like we should make that explicit, or if my concern makes sense. I just want to make sure that if, there could be reasonable disagreement about whether in a particular case every letter of the law was followed here. I think we need to retain judgment about whether the spirit of this was followed or not, and not leave it open that something might get kicked back for some, you know...
No, I agree. Remember, people that are doing this are volunteers, and there are people volunteer running the chair position of a Board Committee, or they're residents, and they may be going through this for the first time. So I would imagine we cannot be so stringent about every "aye" has to be... So I would imagine we cannot be so stringent about every aye has to be dog, if t's crossed. We need to allow some ingenuity there and I agree with you.
So I guess I'm suggesting adding, I'm not sure where it fits best, but some language that says, you know, determination about adequate adherence to this best practice policy will ultimately be the judgment of the Select Board.
Sean.
Anyone else have any?
Sean has.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Sean.
Yeah, and to that point on too, I think what, what we may come to find out is, is that this, you know, there may be parts of this that don't work in actual practice, right? I mean, that's true with all policies. You know, they work great on paper and then little things can come up in practice. So I'm, I'm all for adding that language. But I actually did have a question. So I, my understanding is that this is not, so this is just a memorandum directed towards us, but you know, some version of this would be codified into something that we would vote on. I guess my question is, is where would that live? Would it be, you know, on our website or I guess that's, maybe it's a question for when that comes before us, but.
So we have a Select Board Policy Section on the Select Board's website. We have a handy binder in our office as well. So yes, this would live in our policies area.
And sort of an extension of Sean's question, maybe related to what Chris is about to say, is I think we're intending this to be one chapter insert into something that would be sort of an onboarding handbook at some future time. And so I think I have a little bit of a question of whether we move forward with this and distribute this to committees, or if there's anything else we're ready to, to put together in the form of a handbook. I wouldn't want to wait to do something in anticipation of a future handbook.
No, I say we move on this now. We can always roll that into a handbook given when we're ready to do so, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I think, I think we agree. So, okay, so let's, it sounds like we've had some good comments here. Are there any comments from the public related to the way that, that this policy is structured? Please, welcome Meg.
Meg, I'll offer some thanks to her. Thank you for bringing this up finally. I would suggest that you look at adding some more details to this, especially in regards to appointments that are up for renewal, you know, around the current practice, which is just to automatically renew people indefinitely, that there should be some criteria, some reevaluation process, especially if there are new residents that are interested in seats that are coming up for renewal.
Okay, that's a good point and let's, so thank you, Meg. Do you have any other suggestions? Because I think that's a great suggestion. I'm going to have to talk to the Board about that. You're good? Okay. The, so good point. I guess Kristen, how does this document speak to renewals? I don't think we have a policy of automatic renewal, but maybe we want to be clear that basically it's a reconsideration of all available candidates each time the position comes open. It's not a.
So there was a verbal conversation with the Select Board before we did the annual appointments. And my understanding of that was you had recommended that we reach out to the candidates, see if they were still interested. If they were, then we would reach out to the Chair of that Board or Committee and understand that person's attendance record and their contributions. And if that all checked out, then we would bring that appointment back to your Board for the June renewals. If there was an issue with the attendance or contributions, or that person had moved away, or they did not want to serve anymore, then that opening would occur and that would fall under this. But I think we could potentially add a renewal section to this, or it could be a separate document as well, whichever the Board, Board prefers.
It seems like it would fit here. How do folks feel about?
I don't think we need a separate. It makes sense to be.
So also add a description of the best practice for, for renewal, which is basically as you just described?
Yeah.
Okay. It seems like maybe that's enough change that, do you want to work on this and bring it back to our next meeting for our approval? Or I guess we could approve sort of as amended and trust Kristen's move from here?
I think we could, we could do that. And if we could bring the formal, we could bring the formal policy back for your adoption at the next meeting. Because this is really just a memo. Or if you wanted to approve this and say that it will be turned into a policy and you're okay with that, we can do that as well.
I think we could vote it as amended and we've, we've described it. It sounds like we're, we'd like to do that. Am I reading that right? Okay.
Can I just, so what would this section state?
It would be the process for the yearly renewals.
So yearly, right?
So, I'm sorry. You do them on a yearly basis, but they're not yearly for that person. It could be a term of one year, two years, or three years. So it would be your annual renewal, your annual appointment process.
So how do you see this? How do you, how are you going to change this then?
I don't think I'm going to change this document. I think I'm going to add a paragraph or two on how you would do your annual appointments.
Right, so I'm just trying to think through that. So somebody's up for renewal. I think the intent that would make it saying is that the Committee Chair would be aware that they have one or more members that terms are expiring in X time period. I think at that point, they should be reaching out to the Town Clerk. Hey, have we, you know, who have we had as an applicant for the last X period of time? Reach out to those applicants and say, hey, we're having these slots potentially opening. Do you want to come in and talk to the Committee? And the Committee, if there are other applicants, have to make a determination. Do we stay with the person that's on the Committee currently, or do we take any of the new applicants? And then forward that to us for approval of using this. I think that was the intent, right, Meg?
Exactly.
Yes.
So I'll leave it to the Board of how they would prefer the process to go. I definitely hear the comments and I think that's a great comment, but I would, I would want clarity from the Board of how you would want that to occur.
Okay, so it sounds like, if I understand correctly, one policy that I think Chris is proposing is, in the case that someone's in a seat, is eligible for renewal, we're going to ask the Chair to evaluate their contributions, take a look at other applicants that have been received, and then they ask their Board to reconsider, basically to consider whether they want to put forward the person who's in the slot for renewal or make a different choice. But there should be an explicit decision at the Committee level.
That's what I heard.
Rather than just rolling it over. Okay. Is that, did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay. We have Kristen, also I think Wendy raised her hand.
Yes.
Usually. So I think Wendy put up her hand first. So Wendy, could you, welcome Wendy.
Can you hear me?
Yep, hi Wendy.
Okay, great. Wendy Gloyd, 16 Pleasant Street. I am just wondering, I'm curious how the new Code of Conduct for Committee Service will fit into this, this process, once it's been finalized and published?
Yes, that's a good question, Wendy. And I believe that we're planning in our next meeting, Noel is going to come forward with the draft based on input that we've received and also input we've received from other committees. That would also be something that would probably slide into this new onboarding handbook that we've discussed. So we're not ready to discuss the Code of Conduct tonight, but I think the intent is to talk about it next meeting and after some deliberation and approval, have that be part of the onboarding handbook.
Okay.
Does that, okay. Go ahead, Wendy.
Yep, that sounds great. I would also recommend, and I recommended to the co-chairs of the DEI Committee, that the DEI Committee, due to the nature of its work, may have, may require a different screening process and different questioning than the rest of the Code of Conduct or agreements or other committees. Because it is, it is very centered around inclusivity and respect for other members of the community. And the current applications don't tease out a lot of the, that information where their very free form doesn't seem to be an equitable process in, in terms of making sure that folks applying are actually knowledgeable, able to add to the programming events and initiatives to uplift marginalized voices in our community.
Wendy, there has been some discussion between Kristen and the Chairs of the DEI Committee. Do you want to comment on it?
Sure. Yeah, I did speak with Joe Diamond and Anjali earlier, late last week, and we had the discussion that the DEI Committee would follow the same process as any other Boards and Committees. There's no question that the DEI Committee does great work. We are all in that we have a DEI Committee, we're moving forward with DEI initiatives. But in having that conversation with them, the three of us came to consensus that there is not a necessity to have a separate process for the DEI Committee.
Okay. I respectfully disagree with that, but I will send a note to that effect of why I believe that's important.
Okay, thanks Wendy. And I'm sure you can, you can check in with the Chairs to get additional context about that discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you Wendy. Kristi?
Thank you. I support the new policy. I think it's great. I just think it is very different than, than what we've done in the past, to Chris's point. And I just would ask you to maybe reach out to the current Chairs just to get feedback before you approve the new policy. I don't know, I don't think this is, I'm a Chair of the Board, I haven't received it. So I'd love for people who are currently in those positions to review this, to get their feedback, which may or may not change your, your position, but it'd be good to hear from them.
Well, I think maybe what we could do tonight is approve this policy for us. And then we can send it out and if, if it makes sense, we could, we could have a comment period. We're certainly interested to know if it's workable or if we've missed something.
Yeah, comment period would be a great idea.
I don't know what the sense of the Board is, but I think probably when we send it out, we'll say this is, this is now we're recommending. If you have substantial concerns, please let us know, something like that.
So that is a great idea, Tom and I would recommend, and Sean knows what maybe follow with the School Committee has done for policies. I know it's a little different, but when they have a policy, they do have a very formal, a date line that they follow, that they have various readings, and then it doesn't become official until like, I forget now, two or three meetings after it's been presented.
Okay. Good. We'll take that on board. Thanks, Kristi. Okay. Any other comments from the public? I don't think there are any online. So I think where we are is, I think the proposal on the floor is to, a proposal to accept as amended, I'm sorry, to, to approve as amended the Select Board, Board and Committee Appointment Process.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, thank you, Kristen, and thank you for, you and staff for all the work on that.
Thank you for the feedback from everyone.
Okay, next, we are in old new business. First up is a request from the Scholarship and Grant Committee to be dissolved. I don't know if there's any questions or comments from the Board, from the public?
I know Kristi Bates is here on behalf of the Committee if there are any questions.
Any, any questions, or is it self-explanatory?
No questions.
Okay, I think we're good. So I'll entertain a motion to dissolve, accept the request from the Scholarship and Grant Committee to be dissolved.
So moved.
All those in favor, Sean?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
I want to just thank those folks that have worked on that Committee for all their hard work.
Please, thank you. Thank you for your service. Okay, another request from the Dog Park Task Force to be dissolved. Any, any questions or comments for that one?
Yeah, I'm not sure we should let them off the hook. You sure you want to do this?
Please, yeah.
Karen Hudson, 35 Carlisle Road. I've been on this Committee since we started nine years ago. We hit a really rough spot around COVID and we stopped meeting and then we lost our Chair and we had a fantastic Chair, but she moved out of the area two years ago. And we, I think in those, in the last five years, we've probably had like one meeting. We really don't have a Chair right now because when Lauren stepped down, she just kind of gave the title to me unofficially. So that's why I'm here tonight. I am not interested in being on the Committee anymore and there's only one other member and he is not either. So I contacted someone at Town Hall and asked if I'd be removed and that the suggestion was made, well, why don't we dissolve it? I honestly hate to see it be dissolved because when we first started, we had so much interest. We, we put it out there and we had like 30 people want to be on the Committee. And, you know, we did fundraise, not so much a fundraiser, more of an awareness at various town events on the Common, at the WA Bazaar. And, you know, our mailing list was huge and our Facebook group was huge, but we just don't have anybody interested to run it right now. So.
That's, that sometimes happens in the life of an issue. Okay, any, any questions from the Board? Okay, I will entertain a motion to accept the request from the Dog Park Task Force to be dissolved.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all those in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
I'm an aye.
I get what you're saying. Yeah, again, these guys have been working so hard for this. I feel bad that we have not been able to find a location. I really wish that there were some more folks who were willing to give it another try. I understand, you know, I'm not calling out Karen, you know, you've put so much time and effort into this and so many other Boards and Committees, but I still think it's something that we could make work in Westford. So, I don't know.
There definitely could be a time when, when there's people who feel ready to bring it forward again, and I would certainly support that.
Let me just, if that happens and somebody does want to be involved, I've got lots of memos and knowledge and I'm happy to share that with anybody.
That's very nice.
So they can reach out to me.
Thanks, Karen. Kristi, do you want to, you have a question?
Yes, I just have a follow-up because, so when I was on the Park and Rec Commission with Chris years ago, this park, the, even though there was still a Dog Task Force, our priority for Parks and Rec was a Dog Park. So I guess now that this task force is dissolving, I wonder, is there still a need in the town? Is there still a requirement? I know there have been people on this prior Select Board who committed to, and prior Town Manager who committed to getting a Dog Park. So I guess, where do we go from here? How do we determine if one is still needed? And if so, how do we make that happen?
Yeah, I think my, my answer is that I imagine at some point, there will be a group of people that maybe with the Rec Commission will come together and say, we want to get this issue back on the table. So I think when there's, when there's the, the energy and the interest and the leadership to pull that together, I think we'll be very welcome, open and welcome to having that happen. I don't know if anyone else here has a different take?
I mean, I guess I'll speak, we'll go behalf of the Park and Rec Commission. Certainly, we're welcome to have residents come forward to the Commission and voice support for it. As you know, we have a lot of other critical, you know, items that we're working on, but that doesn't mean that we can't find some bandwidth to evaluate and work with a group of citizens to see if we can move this forward. So I'm all open to that.
I just want to also highlight one thing that came up at a Affordable Housing Trust meeting, looking at Powers Road and potential new development. They talked about possibly, this was one time I heard it, I don't think it came up again, having a public Dog Park there. So I just think as we're talking about new developments and looking at public services that they might provide, that that might be discussed in, in those development discussions.
So we're about to embark on our new open space and recreation plan, as I noted at the beginning of the meeting. So that may come up in our survey data or other community input, that people would like a dog park. And so we could move it from, if it comes out of that plan, that that is a high priority, so we're trying to work in order of priority, perhaps that could move forward at that point in time. But I also love your idea of perhaps a public-private partnership, if we do have development opportunities, to bring that up as well. So I think there's multitude of avenues that we could look at.
I think, do you remember, Chris will know if it was a priority in the last open?
I don't know.
I think it might.
I think we're, yeah, I think we're refreshing with the new us.
We're a new era. Thank you very much.
Thanks Kristi.
Okay, next up is a request from the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee to appoint Scander Kachau, I hope I'm getting the name correct, as a full member for a term expiring June 30, 2026. Any questions or comments regarding Scanders?
And John, just for your note, they did try to follow our memo template to the best of their ability in this request.
Okay, if there are no questions, then I'll entertain a motion to accept the request from the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee to appoint Scander Kachau. Again, apologies if I can get the name correct, as a full member for a term expiring June 30, 2026.
So moved.
So moved.
All those in favor, Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Next up, review and approve the Resident Voting Study Committee charge. So again, thank you. Kristen, do you want to take us through what we're thinking? In this case, why don't we put it up on the big board here? It's not a super long document. We can look at the text while we're talking about it.
So at your last meeting, you heard a presentation from a group of residents who were interested in moving forward with studying voting rights for our local election and local town meeting for permanent residents, so those that have a green card, as well as citizens. At the end of your meeting, you asked us to prepare a potential charge to study this, so not to put it on any warrant at this point in time, but to study. So through the review from other municipalities who may have gone through this process, we gathered their feedback, and also feedback from the board, feedback we heard that evening, to create a potential charge for your consideration this evening. Just very briefly, came up with nine members for that, appointed by the Select Board. The length of the term would be six months or longer if needed. Obviously, meeting times would be at an agreeable time for the majority of the committee. The description would be to research, evaluate, make, and make recommendations. At the Select Board, should put an article on the annual town meeting warrant to allow permanent residents to vote in municipal elections and at town meeting. Obviously, knowing that a resident could put this on as a citizen's petition if they wished, if they got the adequate number of signatures. Adding in a component for community outreach meetings, a minimum of three of those meetings to occur over a six-month period, and then what the deliverables would be, meeting with the state representative and state senator to understand if and when the state plans to take action on the current home world petition bills that have been filed. I believe there's eight or nine currently through that process. None have been approved. To review the work that other communities have done to file their home world petitions, and understand the process, the sentiments of those communities, perform a legal review, working with town council through the town manager, establishing a frequently asked questions page on the website, reporting to the results of those community outreach meetings, and then providing an initial update to the Select Board within three months of the inception, and then ending with a final report and recommendation. We have a criteria for membership, that the appointment shall be made, again, by the Select Board, and that the committee should be made up of a group of US citizens through birth, US citizens through naturalization, legal residents, but not US citizens, and work visa residents. And then if the committee is formed, the staff support would be as appropriate, town manager's office, town clerk, and other departments as needed. If there are subcommittees, we have a bullet point on what that would entail, and then the committee obviously would be responsible for any meeting minutes associated with open meeting law.
Thank you for that. Questions or discussion related to text from the board?
Well, I just had some questions about, I thought that some of the wording, when you talk about permanent residents, you know, there's some legal terms for legal permanent residents versus just, you know, there are permanent residents that, I think they have work visas, but they're not considered residents. I mean, there's some issues here, just make sure that we've got this defined as far as the membership of the committee, and what is meant by that, because it's just kind of like a generic term, permanent residents. But there's some official nomenclature for that, like legal permanent residents.
Right.
And that carries through as far as, you know, down here, the work visa rest, but there are some that have work visas that are not permanent residents. They're not permanent. They have different, I think it's green card, really. When you really get down to it, somebody possesses a green card.
Yeah, Kristen, did this language come from some other document, or was our?
It was really from our feedback, so we're happy to run that through to make sure that it's proper.
So that's a question I have, as far as making sure we've got our eye on exactly who we're talking about, and what we're talking about.
Okay, so I think that's a good point, make sure that they're generally accepted legal definitions and not subject to interpretation. I had one, I had a chance to talk with Lori Miller, who was the chair of the Legal and Voters Group that pursued the same issue some number of years ago. And she made a couple excellent points. One of them is that we probably are doing this work-study group a favor if we make it very clear that they are not making a recommendation to us. They are only collecting information, community feedback, fact-finding, to facilitate a good, well-reasoned decision on a very complicated issue with many moving parts. There was a risk that if the committee, if it's not absolutely clear to the committee, and they think maybe part of their role is to actually advocate for a position, that may make it very difficult for a diverse committee to function. Because if everyone in the committee feels like they're there to defend their individual point of interest and not join in the fact-finding, it could become unworkable.
That's a good point.
People feel good about that?
Yeah.
The other point was that I think the nature of this assignment is going to bring out very strong feelings. And so it may be that one of us, for any of these public hearings, will need to sit alongside a chair, depending on the experience level of this chair, just as a facilitator of the meeting. The idea being that it may be a lot to ask a new chair who's not, we don't know who the chair is, but if the chair is someone who doesn't have a lot of experience running sort of tense, difficult meetings where you have to be fair and listen to kind of, you know, move things along in a clear way. That's not for the document, I think it's just something for us to consider. If we're asking someone to take on something that we know is going to be contentious, we may just need to be present in it, or decide amongst us who's going to sit there at the table and help make sure it runs smoothly. Those are the two points that Lori raised. So as far as the document goes, only just making it explicit that it's not to make a recommendation on direction, it's fact-finding, best practice understanding, and then community feedback solicitation. Any other comments on this from the board, Chris?
Yeah, so just going back to the thing that John was talking about, so that one, that sentence, do we just want to simplify and just say, just take it out? I mean, ultimately, if they're residents, I mean, I know the intent is to try and build a balanced group, right? But we're not, we're not doing that here. We're not saying you have to have X of this, Y of that, and I don't want us to do that. So I'm wondering if we would just be simpler, if we just don't even specify any of those different categories.
Would you just say, living within the town of Westford?
Yeah, just.
I think we could, I think it's fine to just not have a specification of makeup at all, I guess. That'll come to us through the volunteer application process, and we'll have a chance to understand, you know, where people are, whether they're a green card holder or a citizen of some stripe.
Yeah, I mean, it's just.
In general, it's nicer if we don't have.
Right.
So usually for us, when we're setting up a committee, we get that kind of litmus test on the.
Yeah, usually we don't, right?
Usually it's a member of a board or a.
So the committee should be made up of?
Systems are large, you know, systems are large. Whether we need to have a representative from the board or not, that would be, I don't think we have that in here.
I'm comfortable just taking out that particular filter. I think you're right. I think usually what we have is, like if it's a town and school issue, we're going to specify, we'd like someone from the school committee and someone from the Select Board to be on the committee. That's not the situation.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to make a difference.
So I don't think we need that there. It's a good point.
Right, so I would just remove that and just say the committee should be made up of people who live in the town of Westford.
Yeah, so we'll have a chance when we actually see the forms to clarify. I mean, obviously, we're interested in people who are either basically green card holder or citizens. Okay, I see you Diane. Any other comments from the board before we open up to the public? Okay, Diane?
Thanks. Diane Wood, 122 Depot. Two things, I saw the count of committee members as nine, and I think that's a great number. I strongly suggest having a chair at other committees, that you stick with the nine and not open it up as you traditionally do, and let everybody who applies be accepted. This is going to be a quick-moving group, I think. There's a lot of information, there are a lot of people who'll be interested. You can't have, you know, an efficient study group with 15 to 20 people, and then you also have issues with quorum. So I think the nine is personally is a great number, and those who apply need to understand the window, at least that we have set out, is fairly short. And that, it could be, not could be intense. There'll be a lot of movement, a lot of activity, and people need to be committed. Not just, I'm throwing my hat in the ring and whatever happens. That's one point. The second point is, what is the thought process, once the data's collected, and you have your information, educate me again as to what the next step would be after you have all this data?
Right, thanks Diane. So there was initially discussion of a citizen's petition coming forward, which citizens have a right to do if they get the right number of signatures to bring forward. I think at least my feeling was, for a complex issue like this, that has a lot of legal and procedural and other things, to have it just dropped on town meeting without good answers to all those questions that have been thought out and vetted with the community, it's not going to be a very effective discussion. And so, but that doesn't answer your question. What'll happen at the end of this is the Select Board will take up, whether the Select Board feels, based on what this group provides, it makes sense for the Select Board to propose this as an article. Or we may say, at this time, based on whatever factors, we don't think it's a good time for us to do that. And then we would enter into some dialogue with the citizen's petitioners and say, we want to organize this enough times so that they would still have time, should they wish, to get sufficient signatures and bring it to annual town meeting in the spring. So I sort of made a jumble of that. Let me try again. So we hope to get the findings, Select Board will make a decision. If the Select Board decides to put forward the article, that'll take one path. If they decide that it's not the right time, then we would do, we would have that conversation with the citizen's petitioners in such a time that they could then go ahead, should they wish, and bring it forward as a citizen's petition.
With that process, and if the Select Board decides not to move forward with that, doesn't that in effect color for the community the whole proposal? Because they're going to listen to the Select Board to some extent. They're going to take your information, you're going to take your opinion into consideration. So right off the start, they're kind of, if CP moves forward, if citizen's petition moves forward, I see it as kind of, you know, a loss, so to speak. Because the argument's going to be, well, Select Board did not support it, why should we?
So I understand your point. I guess the position it puts us in then is to decide, I mean, what we heard in an earlier meeting was that we don't feel like we have information enough to take that up. We could preemptively decide, we don't have the information, and we're not going to try to get it, and just punt back to the petitioner. But it seemed like the interest of this board to learn enough about it so we could make a good decision about whether we want to pursue it or not. It could have the effect you're talking about, but the rationale for why we're doing this is this. And I also think this is the best way to have a real community conversation about it. I would be concerned, I'm concerned whenever anything that's complicated goes forward as a citizen's petition, because the whole engagement the town has with the issue is, whatever six minutes that one person has to prepare for the town, there's not really a Q&amp;A, so a lot of people just say what they think the truth is, it turns into kind of a jumble. So I'm hoping we can, I hope we do better, and also I think it was the interest of this board to get more information so we could make a better decision.
I don't deny getting the information at all. I totally agree with that aspect. It's just, which is the lesser of two evils in effect. I don't know, you need the information, and it's just a, you know, a balance as to how it turns out. So I totally agree, the data's needed, the research is needed. And the community cannot make any decisions, and you can't unless you have that information.
Yeah. So I accept your point, Diane, and it could have, we'd have to work very carefully to try to minimize the consequence you're talking about in that circumstance. But as a board, we need to get, it's our job to investigate these things, should we be interested in. Okay. Okay, so where are we with this? We've talked about it, we've had board comments, we've had comments from the public. Let me just make sure there aren't any other comments from the public about, again, the structure, scope, wording of the Resident Voting Committee charge, Study Committee charge.
So if I remember correctly, we're striking make recommendations out of the description section.
Yep.
And we are striking the second sentence under the criteria for membership section.
We're placing that with the committee should be made up of people who live in the town of Westford.
Thank you.
Yes. And we are also checking with town council under the description if to allow permanent residents to vote is the correct term, or if we should be using a different term.
Okay. And do people feel just striking the make recommendation is sufficient for the purpose? I guess it can be. We can make it clear with the committee when we impanel them that we explicitly do not want a recommendation, that's not the function.
Finding and education.
Yeah, I just don't want them to be in that position, because I think it's unworkable. Okay. I think we can do that during impaneling without doing more than striking the make recommendations. Okay, so I think we've got clear amendments. Thanks Chris for that.
All right, we'll get that moved. I'll get a final copy to the board before we put it public, just to make sure there's no final.
Do you need to vote to accept it's amended or not for this type of thing?
Yes, please.
Okay. So I'm going to ask for, or I'm ready to entertain a motion to approve the Resident Voting Study Committee charge as amended this evening.
So moved.
So moved.
All those in favor, Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. Okay, thank you. Thank you again Kristen for your hard work on that, and your staff's hard work on that. Okay, next we've got the Westford Form of Government Study Scope. So I guess this, similar discussion.
A little bit different, I think, in several ways. So at several of your meetings, and through correspondence, we've received from other residents, there has seen an uptick in a desire to study our form of government, whether it be the way it is today, a town manager, Select Board, open town meeting, or what other opportunities there could be, Select Board, town manager, representative town meeting, town manager, council form of government. Many communities are actually going through this form of government study right now. So I've gone out to my peers, and they recommended that we contact the Division of Local Services, which is a state agency, had a great conversation with the contacts there. What they are willing to do for us, for free, is to actually benchmark Westford against other like communities, its size, geography, makeup of the government. And then that sets us up for success to then impanel a committee to study our form of government and potential forms of government. So in order for DLS to begin their study, they would need a go-ahead from the Select Board. It will take them about a month to put together the data. We can then present that to the board, hopefully at the end of August, and then move forward with the paneling committee if the board still chooses to do that. And I also think that this sets us up for success for other potential benchmarking. We've talked about health insurance, we've talked about compensation, we've talked about other things. So I think this data would be helpful in more than one.
Good, yeah, thank you. That's good value.
Sean has a question.
Sean, yep?
Yeah, Kristen, would a report like this, is this going to come into the charge?
No, it's free. It's through the state, so free of charge.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Our tax dollars, nothing's free, but it's our tax dollars.
Indirect.
Okay, thank you. I think this is a great recommendation, and it seems like there's consensus.
So if we could vote to?
Do you need to vote?
Yes, so I can authorize DLS to prepare the report.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to approve, I guess, what am I doing here? Can you restate the motion you'd like?
To request that the Select Board approve the Westford Form of Government Study Scope.
Okay, just print it here. Okay. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor. Sean?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, thank you for that. A 10 item is minutes for approval for released regular session, May 27, 2025, June 10, 2025, June 24, 2025. Any comments or discussion on those?
John has one typographical.
Well, I'm just arguing.
Okay.
Somebody was.
Somebody was close to.
Twelve years from now.
The year 3000, 38. 3000, 28, I'm sorry.
Wow, that's, that's a pretty, yeah.
Masochist.
That is a hardcore town volunteer. Okay, so as amended, do I have a motion to approve that three minutes is described as amended?
So moved. So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Order reports and updates. And we already talked about the one that you were going to talk about, Noel, which was just that, I think next time, we're going to come back with the.
The Code of Conduct.
With the Code of Conduct draft, okay. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Any other order reports or updates tonight? Okay, I don't see any. Kristen, town manager report.
So purchase orders and contracts. So this evening, we have purchasers for GNP Service Contractors, Inc. to install a new multi-head split level system at the Rogers Fire Station at 39 Town Farm Road in the amount of $35,080. It was requested by the Facilities Department. This was approved under the capital plan in March of 2024, actually, April of 2024. GNP Service Contracts, Inc. to install a new multi-head split level system and technology building located at 1 East Prescott Street in the amount of $18,000. system and technology building located at 1 East Prescott Street in the amount of $18,823 as requested by the facilities department. This was part of the March of 2025 town meeting. Team EJP for a correlator leak detection equipment in the amount of $25,495 as requested by the water department. This also was approved at the March 2025 town meeting as part of capital. And then Northeast Digital Integrators to upgrade the audiovisual technology in the multipurpose room in the amount of $19,706 as requested by the council in aging, and that, we do have budget allocated for that as well. Would you like me to move on to contracts?
Oh, yes, please do.
Burgess Pest Management for a one-year contract extension for pest management services in the amount of $39,090 as requested by the facilities department. And then K5 Corporation for painted pavement markings in the amount of $64,706 as requested by the public works department.
Any questions for Kristen? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved.
All those in favor, Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
All those in favor, Noel?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
All those in favor, Sean?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. And that ends our meeting. Thank you, Westford.